So DNA Economy, love this topic. Life Technologies has been working with us for a while now and it really is what introduced me to what's going on with DNA sequencing and the possibilities of our future, but the possibilities actually are now. And we were at first questioning, so how does that fit in with digital health? I don't understand. And that's the naive me talking. But I was really excited to see the developments. My father's an oncologist and to see the developments that are with cancer, it's mind-blowing to me and the country, I'm sure, in the future. So, we brought together the best of the best to talk about this topic and how it's transforming medicine all the way from oncology to just our basic wellness. So let me introduce to you the moderator for the session who'll be leading this discussion. It's, I'm gonna pronounce it, I'll try to pronounce it, François Ferret?
I'll do that.
From my little French test. Althea D X. He, I'm gonna share with you fun facts, only fun facts. You have all the bios in front of you for everyone. So I'm sharing with you the fun fact about each of our moderators. He loves to dance. He might give us a little sneak. He's the first on the dance floor and the last to leave. I'm pretty sure that Dancing With The Stars will soon be knocking on his door. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody, and thank you for the invitation here to monitor this panel. I could not be more excited to be here this morning. I mean, this is obviously a subject very close to my heart. And yes, we have entered the DNA economy and we have this morning, you know, two spectacular speakers to talk about it. And again, this is a great opportunity for everybody to learn more about this space. Let me give you a little bit of background on why I'm here today. I've been involved with DNA for the longest time. I've been one of the pioneer in the technology of DNA application that we call PCR. And, you know, been of course involved in a lot of the sequencing technologies. And my company right now, Thea D X, is very much involved in that space, in oncology, such as Dave's company, Life Technologies. And we are a service provider in that space, which we try to work with pharma to find the best match, you know, regarding to patient in terms of providing to patient the best therapeutic matching their genome. And that, of course, is a very important effort, ongoing effort, that Dave is going to discuss at length, so I don't want to steal his thunder. But this is what we do as well on the service side. And Dave is more focusing on developing the technology to do that and the infrastructure to make it happen. So this is, you know, again, where I'm coming from. I'm, you know, also very interested in digital health with my wife, Marg the Market. We've been, you know, we have invested in multiple companies in this space. So we're really passionate about that space as well. And, you know, I'm also very excited about hearing Samir's presentation on, you know, what he's doing for wellness in that space as well. So, without further ado, I'd like to introduce the first speaker. And our first speaker today is Dave Daley. And Dave is current head of oncology at Life Technologies. His background is really in diagnostics. He's been in diagnostics pretty much all his life. He came from a marketing background at Roche and strategic marketing, went to Clarient when he really was focusing on delivering personal health to cancer patients and continued on that mission at Life Technologies, where right now, again, as I said, is running the oncology franchise, which the, really, the goal here is to provide to all patients the ability to really get the best possible care through the knowledge of their genome and therefore, you know, really personalized therapy to cancer patients. Dave?
Thank you.
Thanks, François. Well, good morning, everybody. It's a pleasure to be here. It's my first time at the Omni and I was commenting to my colleagues, being so, being so close to the ballpark, this is a great place to come down and stay in the weekend. So, having been married for 27 years, I've just now found another date to take my wife on. But it is a pleasure to be here and joining Samir and François is fantastic. Since we're talking about personal wellness, we have yet to find personal wellness techniques that I know of that enhance memory to the degree where I don't need note cards for a presentation. So, beg your indulgence, at my age, I need note cards. But when I was preparing for the discussion this morning, I was thinking about the DNA economy. And that's not a term that I've used frequently. Personalized medicine, precision medicine, individualized medicine, yes. But the DNA economy, I haven't. So, I thought a lot about it and thought, what is the DNA economy? And basically, my definition is it's the use of genetic information to answer key questions. Those questions may be related to food safety or water safety. They may be related to a crime scene investigation. They may be related to health and wellness or propensity for a specific disease. Or in my case, genetic information used to characterize a tumor to diagnose a disease, give prognostic information, and give treatment information. But the focus of what we do with genetics is on identifying abnormalities, matching those abnormalities with a specific condition, and then matching that further to a treatment that we know will have a high likelihood of having a positive outcome. And, you know, in this DNA economy, we focus a lot of time and attention on the fact that we can quickly and affordably sequence genetic information or generate genetic information. And that's very interesting, but that's not the real key. The real key is, what do you do with it? What do you do with that information? Today, oncologists receive all kinds of genetic information and oftentimes they look at a report and they go, well, what do I do with this? The key is the ability to take that genetic data, combine it with what we know, and turn it into actionable information. And then deliver that actionable information effectively to the clinicians and to the patient. That's where a lot of the focus needs to be. Why is that? Because we know, in our U.S. economy, in terms of healthcare, we spend about 15% of our GDP on healthcare, 2.5 trillion dollars. That's a lot of money. But what's more interesting is about 30% of that spend has very little value. There's tremendous waste in our healthcare system. So what that converts to in my mind is, we really do need to focus on actionable information. Creating data is, again, interesting, but if that data isn't actionable and doesn't impact outcomes positively, then again, it's part of that 30%. So, how does this impact what we're doing at Life Technologies and in oncology in general? Well, one statistic that I think a lot of people overlook is 80% of all cancers are treated in the community. So when my dad was diagnosed with stage IV colon cancer many years ago, he was treated at St. Joseph's Hospital up in Orange County, in the community, close to home. If I'm diagnosed with cancer here in San Diego, chances are I'm gonna end up at Scripps or Sharp or another community-based institution for my care. The majority of patients are not at M.D. Anderson Memorial Sloan Kettering. Yes, they have patients, no doubt, but 80% are treated in the community. So what are we doing? François touched on it. What we're trying to do is empower community-based care teams with the tools to create genetic information and then the ability to synthesize that information into something that they can actually act on in treating a patient. Because again, today, we want to enhance access to community-based patients to get access to these advanced tools. And today, it resides primarily in those academic centers. So, how are we gonna do it? Well, let's see if I can get the slides to advance. There we go. So empowering individualized medicine, there's the buzzword, DNA economy, I'm just learning, but individualized medicine. How are we at Life Technologies empowering individualized medicine? Well, we're focused in three areas. We're focused in terms of product leadership, enhancing the customer experience, and developing some key capabilities, all focused on positively impacting patient care and outcomes. So let's look at each of the three of these real quickly. Product leadership. It's all about developing content. Content is king. That is, designing molecular diagnostic tests that can better characterize tumors to give better information to the clinicians. Then what we're doing is taking those advanced diagnostic tests and applying them to our instrument platforms to create an automated workflow that's easy to use and can be deployed out into the community. Because if you go to the laboratory at Scripps or Sharp as an example, they're looking for highly automated, very easy-to-use instrumentation. And today, in the DNA economy, most of that equipment is fairly sophisticated and requires a lot of advanced capabilities. But that would impede their workflow and ability to deliver in a timely way. So we're doing that by, we have our own CLIA lab up in Sacramento, California, in the community, a functioning CLIA laboratory, where we're developing tests, optimizing those tests on our platform, and validating that workflow before we deploy it out to the community. Then we're wrapping it around a bioinformatics engine from a company called Compendia that we acquired last October out of the University of Michigan, so we can take that genetic data and synthesize it into actionable information. Then that allows us to do the second component here, and that is enhance the customer experience. So in oncology, what's the customer experience? Well, for us, it's when the physician and the patient come together. Our customer is that moment in the treatment room where the oncologist walks in, sits down next to my dad, pulls out his iPad, and says, let me walk you through your diagnosis, the treatment, and what you can expect from that treatment. So what we're doing is we're developing a web-based portal that we can take this data, turn it into actionable information, and deliver it through the web, so that when that oncologist is sitting down with that patient, they can call up the diagnostic information. You've got non-small cell lung cancer of adnohistology, stage III B. We've also done an EGFR analysis and you've got a mutation in exon 19. Therefore, we're gonna prescribe Tarsiva therapy for you, and this is what you can expect. Since oncologists today see 30, 40, 50 patients a day, they don't have a whole lot of time. They've gotta be efficient and effective in delivering that information. So that's done very quickly. But then, that portal also has a patient component to it, so that when the patient leaves the physician's office, they can then log into that portal, they can then learn more about non-small cell lung cancer of adnohistology, stage III B, learn more about what Tarsiva is, learn more about the side effects, and what to expect over the course of their treatment. And then the final piece is capabilities. And in our development of content workflows and bioinformatics, we need to develop regulatory strength and agility, because we are in a highly regulated environment. You can't pick up the Wall Street Journal or the San Diego Union Tribune these days without hearing something from the FDA or another regulator. We live in a regulated environment. So as we're developing these tools, they're being done under regulatory guidelines. And the second piece is we need to develop reimbursement expertise. We don't want the patients to have to pay for these advanced technologies. We want public and private payers to pay for these. So, to conclude, we're focused on three key questions. Those questions are, what disease do I have? What drugs might work for me? And when my treatment is finished, is my disease going to come back? And we know in cancer, cancer is a very genetically oriented disease. So our ability to characterize those tumors genetically is giving us the data that we need. And now, we do have the capability to synthesize that data, because we've created what's called actionability indices that allow us to match those abnormalities to specific treatments or clinical trials that will benefit that patient. So, I'll come back and have François ask any questions that might be related to what I've just discussed.
Well, Dave, let me just do it this way. Let's hold all the questions until the end.
Very good.
So we have also the possibility of listening to Samir as well, and then, you know, I ask a few questions and then we can open that to the floor, okay? So, let me, my great pleasure also to introduce to you Samir Damani. Samir is MD by training, cardiologist, and Samir, you know, loved DALLA. I mean, this is, you know, I've never seen a doc that loved DALLA so much. And I think that is fantastic, because as we all know, and I think it's a big theme here in the digital health space, we are entering the quantitative health, you know, era. And I think it's so important that we start to quantify everything about health. You know, we have started to do that in biology about 10 years ago. We need to do more of that, but we have entered the world of quantitative biology at, you know, scientific level some time ago. It's about time that we really enter the world of quantitative health. And I think I cannot, you know, think of a better speaker on quantitative health than Samir Damani. Samir?
All right. Thank you for that introduction. And I figure since I'm at a CEA-supported event, I could bring some consumer electronics to show. So what you heard about from Dave is really what I consider precision medicine. It's taking precise mutations, tumor heterogeneity, and applying specific targeted therapy towards that. And it's really fascinating what has happened, and you've seen about a 14,000-fold reduction in DNA sequencing costs since the last decade. And if you compare that to Moore's Law, which shows that processing power doubles about every 18 months, that's about 100 times more advanced than what we've seen with computing power over the last decade, if not more. So, the idea however is that while we have precision medicine on the oncology side, what I feel is emerging is personalized medicine on the population health management side, the management of chronic disease and the prevention of chronic disease. And it's been brought about by really ingenious sensors that have come across, or come about our way through devices now that can measure just about every physiologic variable and broadband connectivity, as well as smartphones. And now, digital data via genetic sequencing and genotyping. And so, what really has happened is, is that we now have a new specialty in medicine. It's a digital health specialty that has emerged, surrounding the use of these tools to better health. And what's interesting is, is that it's not the Journal of the American Medical Association or the Journal of the American College of Cardiology or any journal that first talked about this new specialty. It was actually Wired Magazine. And Wired Magazine in July 2009 came up with this, so it was cover story right here, talking about living by your numbers. And what they, what they were talking about is that if you quantify what you do, if you measure what you do and you understand what you do, you're more likely to manage it. And this concept has now really taken hold across the world and in the medical community, it's just starting to come about. And while physiologic variables can be measured, the genetic information is still digital information. ATCG are the building blocks of biology, and this information provides us quantification of variables that are extremely important and lead us to actionable results. And so, in this particular title, you can see, you know, their mantra or their paradigm is track your data, analyze your results, and optimize your life. And over the next decade, I can tell you, this is gonna be how populations are managed and how health is managed in this country, and how prevention, and how we're gonna actually bend the cost curve that Dave talked about earlier in terms of 2.5 trillion. Right now, CDC estimates are that 80% of heart disease is preventable, 40% of cancer. So if you look at colon, breast, prostate, and lung, most of these are preventable through diet and lifestyle changes. And so what has happened is, you've actually had the consumer industry come up with multiple ways, because medical, the medical industry is always a little bit behind in adopting technology. So now you can go to the Apple Store and get a blood pressure cuff to measure your blood pressure. You can go to Best Buy and do that. You could, you can go to also get your withing scale, which gives you your body fat, because we now know weight itself is not a really good indicator of health and disease, body fat and visceral. So you can actually get your scale, and this goes to a separate app. You also have, you know, heart rate monitor somewhere in here. So you got a heart rate monitor. You can actually track how, how your heart rate's doing when you're exercising. So when my patients and I see them and they tell me they're raking their leaves in the backyard, and I say, you're really not exercising, and they don't believe me, I get them to put on a heart rate monitor and share it with me through their app, and they realize that heart rate of 95 beats a minute is not exercise. And then you got Fitbits, right? So you got steps that you can count, and you got altimeters and all kinds of things. And then you also got, in that same category, you got 23andMe and Pathway Genomics that get genetic information to you. And 400,000 people ordered this last year, and about a million are gonna order it this year. And so, what we're doing at M.D. Revolution is, we're trying to unleash the power of digital health by actually taking these individual solutions that are being used in silos on islands by consumers and bringing it together. We're helping them collect the data, interpret it, and explain it to them, what it means. So then you can use it as part of the quantification yourself to actually drive the one thing that we need, better outcomes. So, here's what you might get from a typical genetic report. And this is actually our software platform, RevUp, that I got this from. So, you would get, okay, I'm at increased risk for hypertension, increased risk for type 2 diabetes, I have possibly low adiponectin levels, which is inversely correlated to heart attack. So that means if I have low levels, I have a higher risk for heart attack as well as diabetes. I didn't have the Alzheimer's variance, but the problem with this is that, what do I do with this? I mean, these companies are putting data out there and they're giving it to the individual, but what, I mean, I see this and even as a doctor, I'm not sure what to do with it. However, you can see that even in the studies that have used this data, in 2011, the group right out of here, the Scripps Translational Science Institute came out with a publication led by Eric Topol with 2,000 patients, where they found out that, you know, in these 2,000 patients that got the direct-to-consumer genome profile, it really didn't do anything. However, this small 25% of patients that showed it to the physician actually did increase their exercise and decreased fat intake. That caught my attention, because I said, well, that's really what, as a cardiologist, I try to get all my patients to do. But if genetics can enable this, then we need to really be thinking about how can we integrate this in care? So, this is what we did. Over the last year, we've invested quite a bit of time and effort and money into our own platform called RevUp Health Accelerated, where now in our practice, we actually have every patient has access to the genetic information. And instead of just giving static information, we couch it with dynamic information. We actually let them know, okay, well, here's your calorie intake from MyFitnessPal that you logged, it shows up on RevUp. So now if I have an increased risk for obesity, I'm like, wait a minute, maybe when I start logging myself, I'm more likely to pay attention to how much I'm taking in. Similarly, if I'm increasing my risk for diabetes, maybe I take a little less carbs than I normally would. And maybe I'm more apt to actually track things and measure things if I know that I can look at it and I know that someone can actually interpret and explain it. So we have a paradigm called measure, monitor, motivate, where you do the measuring, we do the monitoring motivating. And if you're not doing it, you haven't logged your meals in a week, or we send you a text message or an email. It's automated generated from this software platform. And then, you know, on working out, you know, working out is very important. Cardio-respiratory fitness is the number one predictor of mortality. People, we don't hear that from cardiologists, because you can't prescribe a pill for it, right? But the reality is your VO2, your cardio-respiratory fitness is about 10 times more predictive than serum cholesterol for predicting death. And so, here, if I, oops, excuse me, if you have an increased risk for hypertension, maybe I'm gonna be more likely to hit my activity goal of 225 minutes a week. And we use the DigiFit app for actually figuring out who is and isn't getting that. And we're actually finding that it's actually remarkably effective, because as you can see here, about 90% of our patients, we've had about 250 people come through, we've tracked our outcomes at about close to 100 now. And you can see that over 90% of our people are experiencing statistically significant improvements in resting metabolism. Most doctors don't even know that you can improve your resting metabolism. I didn't know that until a year ago. We're actually seeing that through using a heart rate monitor and getting your heart rate to the right zones, you can do it. Similarly, we're motivating people, because now they have genetic information to give them an idea about what things they can actually change. And so, individually, I wanted to show you the individual data, because I think that this is extremely important. As a researcher, as well as a physician, we all like data. So, this is actually body mass index changes, 70 consecutive patients enrolled in our program. And you can see that at zero means that there's no change, it's this change in BMI, so points. And you can see that not everyone benefits, you know, we're not at 100%. But when you look at the trends here, you can see all these people, these consecutive people, are now seeing dramatic changes in body mass index, and we're not doing anything. We're just monitoring them through software. My nurse practitioners actually send them messages and we are, at practice, if you came in, you wouldn't even realize it's a practice, because most of the interaction goes on via email and via software communication. If you look at the change in body fat, it starts to get more dramatic here, because that's what's really, where people are changing their body fat. So you can see that the vast majority of people are going between 2 and 8%. And you do have a few people that did put on, because always you're gonna lose a few people, but we are getting better. This is where it really gets impressive. Visceral fat, which is surrounding your organs, it drives inflammation, inflammation drives all kinds of coronary disease as well as cancers. And you can see that almost everyone is reducing anywhere from, you know, one pound to 10 pounds of visceral fat, which is right here. And then, if you look at resting metabolism, it's quite dramatic. You can see that the vast majority go up between 5 and 40%, and some people did decline. And then finally, your VO2. This is what's most dramatic, I find, is that through precision interval training by using a heart rate monitor, they're able to really get their, get their VO2 and their heart-lung capacity better. And again, the genetics in our field, in personalized medicine and population health management, is an arrow in a quiver. It's not a bazooka. In cancer, it's a bazooka. You find a mutation, you blow it out of the water, right? You get rid of it. Here, it's information to supplement and add incremental value. And so, for those of you guys, I don't wanna spend too much time on statistics, but for those of you who are kind of scientifically predisposed, you can see our P-values are statistically significant at a very high level across every single parameter here. BMI, body fat, body water, trunk fat, RMR, resting metabolism, VO2. So, why does this matter? Well, from a business perspective, chronic diseases are costing the economy about 1.5 trillion dollars a year. This is by the Milken Institute, a report in 2007 called "The Economic Burden of Chronic Disease in Unhealthy America." And this is expected to increase at a current rate to 6 trillion by mid-century, by aging of the population, epidemics, and diabetes and obesity. In 2010, they estimated that healthcare costs would have been cut by $945 billion if employers adopted effective workplace wellness and disease prevention programs. And that is why the corporate wellness and health promotion market, which is estimated at $2 billion, now is expected to grow over 10-fold. And healthcare reform and Obamacare, as much as we like to, you know, really say negative things about it, it's really helping employers really get their employees healthier. And so, what we're doing at M.D. Revolution, we've taken our software platform, we're launching a very big program with Sharp Healthcare. You know, Mike Murphy, who's a CEO, is one of the visionary CEOs in healthcare right now, who really sees, they're an insurer as well, they're a managed care contract, and they really are trying to find innovative ways to manage populations. And so what we're gonna be doing is using RevUp. And our program is a three-month program right now, but it's gonna be a subscription-based model where you get your numbers, you learn your numbers. The first thing you do, you get your numbers, your body fat, your visceral fat, your resting metabolism, your genetics, your labs, bring it all together, and then what we do is monitor and motivate, which can all be done in a very scalable fashion. So that's what we're doing. We're very excited. We're really attacking the corporate wellness market, but we're also franchising our medical practices. And so we're really excited about the personalized medicine space and how we're gonna be able to manage populations using DNA data, as well as these other wonderful devices that are out and available to all of us.
Thank you, Samir. So, I'd like to start the discussion with a few directed questions to our speakers here. I will start with Dave. One thing that I forgot to mention in my introduction about Dave, which is an interesting fact, is that he's an avid marathon runner. And in fact, when I asked him how many marathons he ran, he told me that he had lost count. So that gives you an idea. And I think that's fantastic for somebody that's tackling this huge problem of, of course, finding the right approach for cancer, that we have a dedicated marathon runner here. I think that's gonna be very important for his task.
We need the wellness program to make sure it's actually working.
Exactly, exactly. So, the first question I would have for you, Dave, and it's a bit, I have to say, coming from my world and, you know, interaction with your world, is one thing that I think is still very much an unknown in the future, and talking about, hopefully, a number of entrepreneurs in this room that are looking for a business model in that space. You know, what's the future hold in terms of the regulatory world? In my world, we're working with pharma to develop the most precise companion diagnostics, highly regulated by the FDA. We all have to go through life sanction and PMA. It's extremely expensive, $20 million, $25 million just for one test, sometimes one mutation. And you are talking about providing to the patient and the communities a whole genetic analysis of their cancer, and that would be actionable. And through a CLIA lab, therefore not FDA-regulated. So, you know, how those two worlds are going to be able to coexist and how you see the future there?
Well, that's
Well, that's a great question and one that we spend a lot, a lot of time on, as you might imagine. Because as they went through in terms of the product leadership component, our content through a CLIA lab is not regulated by the FDA, it's regulated by CLIA, which is another branch of the federal government. So we can actually get testing to the market very quickly through that mechanism, but we don't stop there. We are then taking our content to the FDA and going through the entire regulatory process so that we can democratize out to the community. So in order for us to take a test kit from a laboratory-developed test, which we offer as a service through our CLIA lab, and then democratize it out to Scripps, Sharp, St. Joe's, and others, we do have to go through the FDA and get those kits approved. And in other countries, we do the same thing through their regulatory agencies. So we're very much involved. The same holds true for our instrument systems. All of our instrument systems need to go through the regulatory path. So we're taking our systems through the FDA. So those workflows that I've described are very much being regulated. But the big piece, as I mentioned, is creating actionable information or decision support tools. So as we create that web-enabled capability, that too, ironically, is being overseen by the FDA. Why? The FDA does not want life technologies telling a physician how to practice medicine. What they do allow us to do though is provide decision support, where we can provide the mutation status of a tumor, we can match that mutation status up with all the approved drugs that would work for that particular mutation, we can match them up to clinical trials that might be available. It's true decision support, but what has to happen in that app is where the MD, the medical doctor, is actually making the decision themselves to match up that mutation with a specific drug that they're actually going to end up prescribing. But again, since clinicians are so busy each and every day, they're looking for these decision support tools. But the FDA is watching this very, very closely. And in fact, some of these decision support tools have been approved by the FDA, so much so that even for patients logging in, they've received approval to be able to have this interactive environment with their physician and with other healthcare providers. So that regulatory strength and agility is extremely important throughout the entire continuum of delivering the products and services that life technologies is delivering.
And as we continue to develop those tests, how do you see the future? For example, let me give you an example, you were mentioning EGFR mutation earlier on, right? You know, obviously, we're developing, you know, companies that are currently, and some are approved in fact, looking at, you know, specific mutation in GFR as a companion diagnostic, right? If that knowledge is already known through a CLIA lab, you know, will the physician really order that test as well that's supposed to come with the therapeutics? And what's going to happen there? I mean, you know, the knowledge is already there, are you going to confirm that knowledge? Is it going to be essential, you know, as a physician to do that? Or are they going to bypass that completely? I think that's, to me, that's a very important business question for people who are interested in that space, understanding, you know, the hurdle that you're going to be facing in the future as focusing on one diagnostic versus another.
Well, again, Francois, that's a great question. So if you look at, let's take lung cancer as an example. There are many, many mutations that are associated with driving a tumor in lung cancer. EGFR is one of them. And as you characterize that tumor and begin to understand all of those different mutations to answer your question, yes, the physicians want to match that up. I talked about that actionability index. That actionability index was created by Compendia, which is, again, a company that we acquired. But they spent years developing a database by curating data from all kinds of public sources, from published data, collated all of that, and then created these actionability indices so that when a physician logs into our application and they're charting EGFR mutation, again, in exon 19, they then know that there is an actionability level one, which means there is an approved drug available for that mutation. And then they make a decision, do I want to do that? Or they have another mutation, because these tumors have multiple mutations and maybe, given other comorbidities, they may not want to prescribe Tarceva. But they know that another mutation, say, an ALK gene fusion, may confer using a drug by Pfizer called Zalkori. Again, it's an approved drug. Or they may find that there is a HER2 expression in that lung cancer, and they may say, well, there's no actionable HER2 drugs, but actionability index number five says, take an indication in another solid tumor, breast cancer, but you've got an activated pathway HER2 in lung cancer, are there HER2 inhibitors that might be applicable to lung cancer? And yes, there's a publication that confers there is positive data being generated using HER2 inhibitors in HER2-expressing lung tumors. So absolutely, as entrepreneurs are looking for ways to support this actionability component, we've demonstrated that when we acquired Compendia. That entrepreneurial organization spun out of the University of Michigan did just that over a number of years, and that has allowed us to create this actionability index. So the ability to characterize the tumors and then match them up is a critically important business component.
Thanks, Dave. Samir, we know, obviously, everything is interconnected here. So this company is working on ways to reduce the cost of sequencing daily through their franchise in Island Turn. And, you know, we are talking still about, you know, 5,000, 1,000 genomes soon, but, you know, still in those, it looks like five, 10 years out, maybe five even, we may be talking about $100 a genome. You know, how is it going to be impacting your world and specifically, you know, really, using genetic information for your patient populations?
Yeah, sure. So right now, what the, we're talking about two different markets. We're talking about the medical market where you're talking about a medically, a CLIA-based genome, which has been sequenced, and most of the consumer products are genotype-based. So you actually have little chips that do it, so it's much less expensive. You can, 23andMe does it for $99 now, but it's a static number of variants. And what's happening with sequencing is that we're going from knowing common variants, where studies were done in large population using chips, looking at common variants. Now we're able to sequence entire genomes. And so we're going to be able to find more and more rare variants that help predict disease like what we're trying to prevent. So obesity, diabetes, heart disease, cancers that are now going to be much more phenotype from a genetic standpoint, meaning that you know variants that are rare. And so the number of variants that are, we're able to talk about in a preventive sense is going to increase exponentially.
Right.
Also, the curation, the number of studies coming out now are going to increase exponentially at the same time. So as sequencing goes down, the number of studies go up. So there's going to be more and more actionable information. So if you came to us today, we might be able to tell you, you know, what we genotyped on a chip. Soon, we'll be able to genotype or have your whole sequence. So as new variants get annotated, right, you don't ever have to get your genotyping done again. RevUp will then automatically populate and send you a message, hey, a new variant has come out that is linked to obesity, a new variant has come out that's linked to heart disease. Then what we'll be able to do is link the digital health solutions surrounding continuous monitoring to help say, hey, listen, your walking pace, you're walking 10,000 steps a day, but you're not going at the speed you need to go to. You just had a rare variant that shows you have about a threefold increase in risk for coronary disease, you need to pick up your speed from 2 meters a second to 3 meters a second. So what it's going to do is going to allow us to move towards more precision-based prevention and health while right now we're more personalized.
Right. Very good, very, you know, very interesting. Obviously, we all know that DNA is the blueprint of life. And, you know, I saw you with all your gadgets out there. Obviously, you know, on the biology side, you're not going to stop at one gadget again, it's in fact called DNA gadget. But it being the blueprint, of course, it's essential, yet there's all the other world out there that are going to be very informative as well, you know, the proteomes and, you know, the RNA world and as well as, you know, the metabolome. So how do you see that in the near future being integrated also in your practice?
Yeah, so, you know, first I want to make it very clear, you know, genetics, people have very, really false misconceptions around what genetics is. I mean, we think about, you know, genetics means you're determined to develop a disorder. And it's not true. I mean, genetics is probabilistic, it's not deterministic. You know, it's no different than somebody being overweight saying that they're definitively going to develop diabetes. They're not. In fact, many obese people have normal blood sugars. So similarly, you know, all these tools, proteomics, metabolomics, are going to build into, integrated, just like we're integrating physiologic variables, they're going to be integrated into models where you're going to get your metabolome done, you're going to be getting your genome done, you're going to be looking at physiologic variables, what your heart and lung capacity is. And there's going to be scoring systems and ways in which you can actually predict your risk for disease. But more importantly, I have to say that as we get more and more in-depth into the technology, one of the things that I have found, just as a practicing cardiologist, that we try to make things more complex than they are in many times. The reality is, you're practicing physician who's seeing 15, 20 patients a day, the more complicated these algorithms get, the harder it's going to get to actually use the tools. So we have to make the tools easy. And when you really think about what impacts disease today, it's diet and exercise. Diet and exercise prevents so much of what we do. And the misconceptions around what diet and exercise means and how much you need to have, how little you need to have, it's really broad. Even the most educated people really don't know, how should I eat? Because everyone's doing the new fad diet. So what we need to really do is encourage people and educate them to increase their awareness of what they're doing and use these tools to enhance behavior change. I really believe that at the end, when you look at exercise and a lot of publication done at this, you know, you have pleiotropic effects, effects that impacts every organ system in your body. And so there's never going to be a drug or something that is a simple solution for prevention. It's going to always involve that at its core. So when I think about technology, I think about design. If you're not thinking about design and how you're going to implement it into people's lives, then you failed. And so what we're doing at MD Revolution is really thinking about that design. How do you design these wonderful technologies to actually drive outcomes and drive better behavior and allow it to be scalable and allow doctors to use it? And that's, there's a gap, we call the valley of death. The valley of death is where the translational science and the research is there and the delivery is over here, and there's this big valley that we're trying to cross. And that's what we need to figure out how to do.
Right. And before I open the, you know, the dialogue here to the audience, obviously, you see Samir, very fit guy and, you know, loves the data, but one thing they need to know about Samir is also a foodie, if you can believe that. And in fact, Samir loves red wine, he loves eating pizza, he loves a good margarita, but he all do that, I guess, in moderation. That's why you can look the way you look. So it's not, you know, qualification of that doesn't mean that you have to, you know, to really punish yourself all day long.
Thank goodness.
Yeah. So I wanted to really clarify that, you know, loud and clear here to the audience. So with the time we have left, I would love to get questions from the audience. You know, we can't see anything here, so if you could put the lights up or something so we could see your face and at least your hand raised, that would be great. Questions?
I used my FitnessPal in the last, like, three and a half years, I lost like 60 pounds. I had a diabetes, my predi, thank you, prediabetes and, you know, I had to take control of what was going on. And I'll tell you, using my FitnessPal was very, very helpful. Also took up road biking so that I could do, you know, the cardio. But one of the other things I did, and I haven't heard discussed, and it could be part of your program, is I did start working with a wellness MD. So we started checking all of my levels, my, I use compounded hormones and, you know, all the vitamins and this and that, so I knew what I was taking was actually being effective. Have you incorporated some of that into your technology and what you're providing your patients?
You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of wellness places, institutes, doctors that are, that are doing a lot of different things. And what we try to do is we really try to stick with the evidence. We're very scientific-driven. Our surrogate endpoints surround visceral fat, they surround VO2, they surround resting metabolism posture as we age. And so we really focus on those elements. And the hormones that we look at or anything that we look at relates to changing those parameters because the data really supports those. I think that, you know, when you look at the industry, the wellness industry at large, I hate to say that, I think that there's a lot of people that have gone off and doing a lot of things that are not necessarily supported by proper science. And so the quick answer to that is that we use it selectively. We are a lab, a clinical lab, which is a medical practice, and we do bring in things. We're always looking for new solutions and new ways in which to actually bring in. I mean, we look at, you know, I have many patients that do Tai Chi. I mean, there's all kinds of things we do, but the short answer is that it's got to be evidence-based and the evidence for a lot of the hormones and stuff is really not solid.
Other questions?
Thank you very much for this amazing discussion. One question that came to my mind was, now we have, of course, the bulk of what we've been talking about is providing feedback and assuming that providing feedback will result in behavior change. So I was wondering if there's been any work that you're aware of that correlates genetics with attitudes and the likelihood that a person will actually change their behavior and therefore influencing the approach to motivation, which of course has implications in terms of psychotherapy as well as in terms of motivating behavior change that might result in lowering physiological risk.
So the New England Journal of Medicine actually study I just showed you where it was an overall negative study, but when they looked at the 25% of people that actually showed it to the physician, there was behavior change. And our data is our data. We actually have over 100 people to show that it has induced behavior change. But again, I think it's an ecosystem that has to be built around. Genetics by itself doesn't do it because it's just information. And how you use that information has to be interpreted and explained. So remember, The Wired Magazine is track your data, analyze the results, and optimize your life. But what I'm finding is the tracking and analyzing and the optimizing, the tracking the patient could do, the optimizing and analyzing and the biofeedback loop has to be a team. I feel like it's a team approach. And I think Dave mentioned that too, and you guys even have a team approach to where you're helping. We're trying to educate physicians and we're trying to educate patients and we're trying to educate pairs, we're trying to educate regulators, it really is an ecosystem. But to the point on motivation and lifestyle, you know, it's interesting, we're spending a lot of time in lung cancer. And today, 20% of all diagnosed lung cancers are non-smokers. So while lifestyle changes are critically important, I think we also, again, why genetics becomes so important is the ability to characterize what's happening in a non-lifestyle-related fashion. So whether it's through secondhand smoke, radon gas, pure genetics, cancers like lung cancer aren't just being driven by the traditional means with which we associate them with. So the motivation, I think, is critically important on the part of physicians to try to understand and get that data and knowledge. And at the same time, the patient's recognizing not everything that you read on Google is truth. And then how do you really find the correct information so that when you and your physician do get together, you can be motivated to have the right sort of outcomes relative to, in my case, a cancer therapy and following that therapy through to completion? You know, maybe or maybe not surprising, a lot of patients, when they're diagnosed with cancer and they're trying to make a decision between a lifestyle and a therapy, sometimes in early-stage cancers especially, they'll choose not, they'll choose to forego a therapy because of the harsh side effects. And whether they're motivated or not will depend on a lot of the genetic information we can provide them to say, I've got an early-stage lung cancer, I've had it surgically resected, and the surgeon has said, go home, you should be fine. Well, we know stage one, non-small cell lung cancers that are successfully surgically resected, 45% of the time, 45% of the time, those cancers will recur within five years, and 100% of recurrences die. So the ability to provide people information so that they can be motivated to take action is critically important.
Other questions? Maybe take another one?
Yes, as an oncologist, as you know, many, many payors do not want to do genetic sequencing. And also, there are many tumors that don't have beneficial outcomes yet for monitoring that. that.
Absolutely.
What do you think should be the standard recommendation of the profession to payors in terms of permitting DNA sequencing, even for tumors that don't have proven relationship to, that is therapeutic relationship to the genetic profile?
Well, that's a great question. And to be honest, I wish I had an answer. That's what we struggle with. So today, DNA sequencing, next-generation sequencing of a tumor is not covered by payers. So fortunately, for companies like Life Technologies, we have proven technologies like PCR-based applications that can, in a single gene format, begin to provide that information, and it is paid for. So my recommendation to the community-based care team is start with what is actually paid for, utilize the technologies that are approved and being paid for today while we fight the battle with the payers and the regulators to get it covered. Now, there are other providers who are solely basing their analysis of tumors on sequencing, which is, which is great, and matching it up to approved therapies. But today, they're not getting paid, or they're asking the patient to pay $5,000 for one of these tests. So I think there's a lot of work we need to do. You're asking the, definitely the big question for us, but we're spending significant amounts of time educating the federal government. We had meetings with CMS not too long ago, educating them on the value and benefits of sequencing relative to existing technologies. And we're spending a lot of time with the Aetna's, the Humana's, and the Blues doing the very same thing. And we're confident in the very near future, these technologies will be reimbursed, and we will be able to readily deploy them into the community so that they can provide the benefits that we all know that they do, but getting paid for. So great question.
Any more question from the floor?
I just want to ask a follow-up question.
Yeah.
You know, I don't know if I articulated my previous question correctly. What I wanted to ask was, is there a genetic profile of personality? Right now, we have previous behavior that is used as an index to, for prediction of future behavior, such, say, in marketing. There's also astrology, and there's other ways that, you know, may or may not be valid in terms of predicting behavior. So my question is, do you know if there's a genetic profile of personality, and is it even worth pursuing?
There are, there are absolutely genetic profiles of personality. The DRD2 gene is a, is a gene for novelty-seeking. So, you know, it actually, these individuals tend to be the skydivers of the world, and you can kind of categorize them in certain ways. They tend to be more adventurous. But then even on the eating and behavior side, there's the MC4R, which is melanocortin, which is a, it's an opiate receptor variant that actually looks at people that have, that have eating disinhibition. So a lot of my, in fact, my son, you know, and my daughter are quite different. Until I married my wife, I thought everyone, if there's a bowl of cookies in front of them, ate the whole bowl. I just thought I was normal. If you're hungry, eat it. And then I found out that that's not the case, because my son is five, or, you know, seven actually now. He, he takes, you know, three bites of ice cream, puts it away. My wife's the same way, my daughter will eat the whole thing. So, so there are things we're seeing in our practice, like eating disinhibition in particular, that I find I have it. And I find that a lot of our patients are really succumb to that, and a lot of obesity is because of that. So absolutely, and those, those variants are going to increase as we, as we go to sequencing and find out more and more. But nutrigenomics is what you're referring to. It's a whole field, nutrigenomics. And nutrigenomics is Claude Bouchard out of, can't remember, somewhere, I think in New Jersey, and Pathway Genomics has pioneered a lot of stuff on nutrigenomics and categorizing the variants. So absolutely, there's a lot out there, and we are using quite a bit of it.
Great. We already passed our time here. Just in closing, if I'm allowed to minitiche, guys, Dave, you know, the space we're in, and Samir the same way, but let's start with Dave, is moving at light speed. It's, you know, understood at the technology level, you know, sequencing, or it being the digital world. I mean, it's, the convergence of that is amazing, but it's, it's moving so fast. So I'm not going to ask you the 10 years out question, because, you know, there's no way you can, but what's your world in five years, Dave?
I think the world in five years is the ability to, within the community-based setting, being paid for, having very compact sequencing systems where you can sequence whole genomes, whole exomes, metabolomes, proteomes. And you can take that information and very quickly generate a report that a clinician can take to the bedside or take to the treatment room and be able to very quickly diagnose, provide prognostic and therapy selection information, give a solid prediction of what that outcome is going to look like, and be able to positively impact patient care, and do it for hundreds of dollars versus hundreds of thousands of dollars or thousands of dollars. Now, that's, the cost, to your point, Francois, is coming down rapidly. That, that is good and bad. But at the same time, I think responsibly, it's really the ability to understand that information appropriately. And as my oncologist colleague here will say, it's, it's most important to know what to do with that information responsibly. And I think in five years, we'll have much greater understanding of all of these genetic mutations involved in various cancers, and there will be significantly more therapies that are available. And the ability to quickly match those together using sequencing will be the norm in the community setting.
Samir, five years out?
Yeah, I think you're going to go from a system which is focused on sensors, devices, and information to, to systems built around useful and actionable delivery, so ecosystems that, that involve software. If you think just as a, as a corollary, think about Apple and what they did with consumer devices. They brought together platforms where things work together in an ecosystem. If you really think about why Apple's so successful, it's because of that. Similarly, the, the device in digital health market is very fragmented right now. It needs to come together in well-run, seamless ecosystems that where you're delivering a service. And again, it goes back to design. So I think the design of the technologies are going to be much more integrated and more effective.
So will I be walking down the aisle with my Google glasses and RevUp on in five years?
That's our goal.
Thank you so much, Dave. Thank you, Samir.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.